I call to order this regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission Monday, June 27, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
To the United States of America and to the Republic which has saved us, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Bell, please take the roll. Commissioner Alsager?
Here.
Commissioner Asman?
Here.
Commissioner Eke?
Here.
Commissioner Ronan is absent. Commissioner Bush?
Here.
Vice Mayor Simon?
Here.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Since we have a quorum, we will continue the meeting. At this time, we have an introduction of a new police officer, Officer Mason Nash, and Director Loria will swear him in.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I have the privilege of swearing in and introducing our newest officer, Mason Nash. Mason joins, has joined the Mount Pleasant Police Department, May 17th, and is currently in our 15-week field training program. He received a degree in criminal justice from Mid-Michigan College and recently graduated from the 110th Delta College Police Academy. Mason comes from Austin, hails from Gladwin, Michigan, which makes him a flying G. And so he'll be making his transition into being an Euler over the coming several years. So without further ado, Mason, if you could come forward. Right here. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Mason Nash, do solemnly swear.
I, Mason Nash, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, defend, and uphold.
Support, defend, and to uphold.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
The laws of the state of Michigan.
The laws of the state of Michigan.
And the ordinances of the city of Mount Pleasant.
And the ordinances of the city of Mount Pleasant.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Mason. You are now a certified police officer.
First off, I'd say, I want to say thank you for this opportunity. I'm super excited about it. I'm excited to serve the city of Mount Pleasant and the citizens of Mount Pleasant. It's been a dream of mine to be a police officer, and I couldn't be more happy about this opportunity and, and serve such a great place, a great department, and a great city. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Officer Nash. At this time, we have an introduction of the new water distribution operator, Steve Wasagigig. Almost got it. Wasagigigig. Wasagigig. I'm getting caught on the gig.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm pleased to introduce our most recent addition to our water distribution operator team, Steve Wasagigig. He comes to us from the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe, where he worked as an operator in their water treatment plant. While he was there, he completed a leadership internship for the tribe's facilities department. Previously, he worked as a crew leader for the state of Wyoming's Forestry Division. He's received an associate's degree in business from the Saginaw-Chippewa Tribal College. He holds Eagle F-4 and S-3 licenses, as well as a Class B CDL. He's worked with us for the last several weeks on the water team, and we're sure glad to have him.
Thank you. Welcome.
I'd just like to thank the city for the opportunity to contribute to the team and the utility that we provide to the people of Mount Pleasant. I look forward to expanding my knowledge and putting it to use for the people of Mount Pleasant. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we have a presentation from Kaylee Beltnick from the Listening Ear Crisis Center.
I want to say thank you for having me tonight. So my name is Kaylee Beltnick. I am a foster care licensing specialist at Listening Ear Crisis Center, located right here in downtown Mount Pleasant. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about our program and specifically about the foster care program at Listening Ear, because I'm learning that it's kind of a secret, and I'm trying to get it out there to our community members so that they know this awesome program exists and that we are here to help and serve children all across the state of Michigan. So I just kind of wanted to say a little bit of why my program is different than typical foster care that people might have in their heads already. So our program is specifically tailored to our foster parents. We intentionally keep our caseloads at a more manageable level so that we can offer our foster parents with an extreme level of support. We do this by seeing kids at least weekly, if not more, if a foster parent needs us. We also have our 24-hour crisis line, which most people tend to know us for. That line can also be utilized by my foster parents to reach me or any of our other trained foster care staff at any hour of the day if they need something from us. We also offer our foster parents with training opportunities throughout the year. It usually averages out to about 30 hours, give or take a few. We just want our foster parents to feel as prepared for anything, because like with raising your own children, you never know what's going to come up. So we also let our foster parents give us suggestions, like, hey, we want more training on this topic. And it's actually my job, I go and create an entire training for our foster parents so they feel as prepared as possible. Another unique thing about my program is that we accept youth from multiple different areas. I could take referrals from MDHHS. I also can take referrals from court systems all over the state, and I can also take referrals from community mental health. So that really opens up our program and the amount of youth we can serve and the areas that we can serve these youth. I have a lot of youth currently from the UP, because there's not a lot of resources in the UP currently, so they can send them down here to our area where we have more of those counseling services, more of those other kinds of services that these youths need. And also, because we can get youth from all different kinds of sources, our compensation rates for our foster parents tends to vary. It's typically higher than a DHS set rate. And I do want to share just a little quick success story about why we do the things that we do. I have a youth currently with us. She came to us, very low self-esteem, failing all of her classes in school, very low confidence. She's been with us about a year now, and she's got all straight A's. She has her IEP taken away. She no longer needs those services. She recently wrote a little book, so she's just on the fast track for success. She's got goals, wants to be a mechanic, and knows how to make it happen now. And she credits a lot of that to just having foster parents in her life who supported her, because those were the first adults in her life who showed that they cared. So that's the reason that we do what we do, is to change the lives of these children, because we've all seen or heard of system failures. If these youth don't get early interventions, I'm sure we've all heard stories. So my goal is always to spread the word and let people know I'm here to answer all of their questions when it comes to foster care. That is completely my job. I did leave some information when you guys first come in. We do have a website, which is just listeningair.com, pretty easy to remember, and my contact information is on there, and I can answer all your questions. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I have one.
Commissioner Eke?
I would like to add a discussion, if possible, today, or at least something to do with the creation or adoption of a city land acknowledgement statement to the agenda. Just place it there. We can come back to it, but at least it reminds us to take that up if we don't discuss it today.
Well, we can either place it on the agenda. We don't have any materials on it, and I understand what you're asking for, or we can ask staff to create something for the next agenda.
I would like that, because we do need to do that. I mentioned that before at some point, but I think I would like to.
Okay, so.
Urge us to do that.
Okay, so we will ask the staff, yes, something for them to work on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay. We'll have a vote, a motion to accept the agenda as it is?
So moved.
I second.
All right. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Agenda has been adopted. At this time, we have public input on agenda items. If you are with the public today and you'd like to make a statement on any of the agenda items that we have today, please step to the podium, state your name, address, and you'll have five minutes to make your statement. If you are joining us by Zoom, please use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining the Zoom by phone. When you are acknowledged, you'll be brought into the meeting where you can state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes for your comment. Is there anybody by Zoom here today?
No raised hands.
Are there any emails?
No, there's not.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward? All right. At this time, I will close the public input, and we will move on to the receipt of petitions and communications. Manager dissents?
We do not have any receipt of petitions or communications this evening.
Well, that is a surprise. Usually, we have at least 10. All right, so we will move on to the consent items. Are there any items that the commission would like to remove from the consent calendar? No? Okay, manager dissents, can you please give us an overview?
Absolutely. Consent items for this evening includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held June 13, 2020, minutes of the airport joint operations and management board from May, consider approval for a contract with Pro-Lime Corporation for lime residual removal for a bid total of $429,000 and a budget amendment of $129,000. Consider approval of contract with McKenna for planning services on an as-needed basis. Consider resolution approving the transfer of adult-use marijuana retailer license location to 1207 East Pickard. Consider resolution approving the transfer of adult-use marijuana retailer license to H&amp;G Ventures LLC, and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
All right. We do not have any public hearings today either, so we will move on to new business. New business is item 11 on the agenda, where we're going to consider the resolution approving the charter amendment ballot language to change yes. Can we have a vote on the consent agenda, please? I suppose. All right. Do I have a motion to accept the consent items as presented?
I hope that we accept them as presented.
I second.
All right. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, now we're going to move on to new business. We're going to consider the resolution approving the charter amendment ballot language to change the term of office for city commissioner members and hold elections on even years. Manager dissents, can you please do an overview?
Yes. At the request of the city commission, the city attorney has provided a resolution for ballot language to be approved by the city commission ahead of the November election. Approval of this item will place a question on the November 2022 ballot, which would amend city commission terms of office from three to four years. Elections would be staggered that two groups of commissioners would be elected in even years. So for the two offices to expire December 31, 2023, there would be an election in November of 2023 for a three-year term. Each would expire on December 31, 2026. For the three offices that expire on December 31, 2024, there would be an election in November of '24. For a four-year term, each would expire on December 31, 2028. And for the two offices that expire December 31, 2022, there would be an election November 2022 for a three-year term. However, those terms shall be extended by one year each and shall both expire December 31, 2026. We do have city attorney Mike Homier on the call this evening. Should you have any questions about the language?
Okay, and my first question is that those that are elected in November, they will extend a year if the ballot is passed?
That is correct.
Okay. Are there any questions? Commissioner Alsager?
Just a comment that I think Mr. Homier did a real nice job of explaining it and making it very clear so we understand what's going on.
Yes. Anyone else have a question? All right, then I will entertain a motion to approve the charter amendment ballot language to change the term of office of city commission members and hold elections on even years.
I move.
Okay. We have a motion by Eke and a second by Bush. Any further discussion on this? All right, we will go to a vote. Do I do, can I do a regular vote, or do I have to do a roll call? This is a resolution, so we'd need a roll call. Okay. All right, so we will go to a roll call vote. Commissioner Ronan is absent. Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Eke?
Yes.
Commissioner Asman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simon?
Yes.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Now we are at announcements on city-related issues and new business. Any of the commissioners have anything they would like to bring forward, discuss, or state at this time? Commissioner Bush?
This is just for community information. Any community members interested in signing a petition to place a ballot initiative on the ballot for reproductive freedom protection in the Michigan constitution, that petition is available in the Stadium Mall at the Michigan Reproductive Freedom Office at 2316 South Mission. They're there from 5:30 to 7:30 PM, Monday through Friday.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Alsager?
I just wanted to express to the community that I was really, I really had my heart warmed that too, by the wonderful turnout at the rally that we had yesterday. It was very nicely done.
Excellent. Any other comments? I'd like to remind everyone that it doesn't matter what level of government decisions are made, those decisions affect everyone. And whether you believe it affects you or not, it probably affects somebody that you know. So be kind to each other, and let's move forward and try to get back to the rights that have been given to us. Anyone else? All right. I will open the floor to public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. If you would like to make a comment on agenda or non-agenda items, you may step to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you can use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. Once you are recognized, you'll be moved into the meeting where you will be able to give your name and address and be given five minutes for your comments. Are there any emails?
No, there are not.
Is there anyone in the land of Zoom that wishes to make a comment at this time?
No raised hands.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would wish to come forward and speak at this time? All right, I'm going to close the public comment section. Because we are only 21, 20 minutes into the meeting so far, I am going to ask the commission if they would be okay that we forego the recess and move right into the open work session.
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, so we're going to move into the work session. We're going to discuss downtown parking. Manager dissents, can you give us an overview?
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Mayor Perschbacher. Let me just get to the right document here. So this evening, I just want to highlight to the city commission, I just want to engage in a conversation around parking within the downtown. I want to go over just a brief history of where the city's been with downtown parking enforcement, the things we've tried, the things that seem to work, haven't worked, issues that we've run into. For that conversation, I will turn it over to another member of the staff, but before we get there, we'll also talk about just overall, should the city enforce parking in the downtown? Is this something that we see as a need, and should we provide the enforcement? Or do we simply provide the space, allow people to park as they want to, and just move forward from there? And then if the answer to that question is yes, the idea is what kind of restrictions do we want to put in place? Is this a timed restriction? Is this something that should be metered, et cetera? So to kick us off, I am going to turn it over to Michelle Sponteller, who is our downtown manager. She's going to be able to provide an overview of the history of parking in the city of Mount Pleasant. Do we have Michelle on the Zoom call?
Michelle was on the Zoom call, but she exited. I thought she was probably coming down to the chambers, but maybe she's having some difficulty then.
Uh-oh. Okay. Well, to move the conversation along, once, there we go. Perfect timing.
No.
No bills here. I'll tell you what, if I can, then I'm just going to go ahead and shift gears and just kind of tee up the conversation of should the city enforce parking restrictions in the downtown? Then if the answer is yes, I think we can start moving on with kind of an information session on the history provided by Michelle. But arguments for enforcing parking in the downtown, the staff has talked about this. I think there's several arguments for doing it. One of the chief concerns or complaints that we get here at the city is that we have a lot of people parking in, let's call them, prime spots along the streets, where businesses would want their customers to be able to park, but we do have employees of different businesses, owners, et cetera, that park in those spaces. So enforcing parking downtown would facilitate and call it more opportunity for parking. So for instance, the current model within the city right now, we have sign parking that says two, three hours in some areas. Every two, three hours, those cars are supposed to move. Now, one of the things that has happened, as staff has told me in the sizzle a little bit before my time, is like the two, three-hour shuffle, though, is where people will come out, they'll move their car just to a different space, so it doesn't really facilitate any new parking options for anyone, but really just kind of churns the parking up a little bit. So there is a bit of a drawback to that. Again, could be used as a tool to better manage some of the available parking spaces downtown if managed appropriately. And then there is also the discussion of if this were to be, let's say, metered parking, there is then the opportunity for a revenue stream for the city to utilize that revenue for maintaining parking, which we do spend hundreds of thousands of dollars in any given parking space. And over the next six years in our capital improvement plan, we will be spending over a million in downtown parking in particular. Arguments against parking enforcement, one issue that we ran into and the reason why we're not enforcing right now is the chalking of tires was determined as illegal. Now, this keeps kind of going back and forth in the courts, but ultimately, I think it's safe to err on the side of caution of not utilizing a tire chalking system. We would have to move forward with a new system. That new system could have some costs, and absent any revenue would be coming out of general fund dollars. So that's probably one of the reasons to argue against it, and some, I think, might say that we don't have an issue with parking in the downtown, and so there's no issue to really correct here. So I would say those are the chief arguments that I've heard as to why we wouldn't enforce parking in the downtown. But I think I've probably primed all of you enough and stalled for time to the point where maybe I can hand this off to Michelle, who can give us a better history lesson than I can on what parking enforcement or parking programs the city of Mount Pleasant has had in the past. So, Michelle.
We did.
I know. Well, thank you. Everyone's favorite topic, parking, right? So included in your packet was an overview of the history of parking. So going back, we've had municipal parking lots almost since the very start of our community. What we know as parking lot two, Jockey Alley, was a municipal lot. Parking lot, very first formal parking lot, however, is the location of the Basin Building, so the old, old city hall was a parking lot. And then slowly, they came on up until the late 80s and early 90s. We have had everything from permit parking, three-hour parking, two-hour parking. It's changed over years. We have currently 13 municipal lots. Two of those are permit lots, seven and eight. There's a map included in your packet, so sometimes I know the numbers, and I don't expect everyone else to follow along. We did have about an eight-year window where we had physical meters from approximately 74 to, I think the last ones were taken out in 82. You can be in parking lot three, that pie-shaped at Main and Broadway. In the middle of that lot, there's a concrete section. You can see the holes. So there's a little remnants here and there. So over the years, we have tweaked the parking management for all of our lots. Every fall, when we sell our permits, I sit down, I review the data, what tweaks can we make? For example, parking lot 10, that over the years has been a three-hour lot. Then we moved it to a 10-hour lot. We tried for a small window to have it a permit lot. Didn't seem to be very popular, so we just moved it back to a, if you will, 10-hour parking lot. So we make those tweaks as we go along. I did look at the current data as far as permits, in case you are interested. We have 113 permits available for parking lots seven and eight. There's 126 spaces, however, between those two lots. We have 60 overnight permits, and we're just in the process of selling for the second half of the year. So if you have any questions about the history, I didn't want to go too far into the weeds with you because there's a lot to know about. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to help you, though. Yes.
Just one question. As I looked through the material, it looked like at various times there was discussion about parking ramps. Was that? Was that generated by a study or generated by, you know, requests from city staff? Or how was that generated?
Typically, a request for a parking deck or parking garage data comes from outside of City Hall. It's a conversation I have had a number of times. So I'm just going to hit you with the highlights because I figured someone was going to bring it up tonight. So if you use parking lot five as the example, that's located, let's see, Washington in Michigan. It's one of our largest lots behind the Old Ward Theater, if you're local. It has 86 parking spaces. The going rate for a parking deck is $26,000 per parking space just to build. So given that example, a simple two-story deck would be just shy of $4.5 million. Currently, what we run into is people don't like to walk two blocks to free parking. So I have a real hard time when someone brings up, well, what about a deck? Are people actually going to go and pay for parking when they don't currently walk for free parking? And that doesn't include the annual cost. It's recommended that you have a 15% sinking fund right off the start. You have to start setting that aside, so when the concrete goes bad for that two-story dock, you can begin to replace it.
Thank you.
Do we have somebody that, I know we used to have, obviously, we had somebody that chalked tires. Do we still have a parking ordinance enforcer or whatever you want to call them?
Paul, I was going to say, that runs through code enforcement. I know that from time to time, they go through the lots, but I don't know the particulars on how often they do or the time allocated for it. That I don't know.
That goes to the code enforcement, but police officers also are able to enforce parking. So, but it's been suspended now for...
Two and a half years? No, it's been, no. Oh, my. COVID did a number. Three years, I guess it's been. There goes my time. Wow.
Are you aware of the benefits or drawbacks of that Pango parking?
No, I'm not that familiar with the system. I'm not.
Okay. Any other questions?
One of the drawbacks, Pango, is you have to have a smartphone. And the concern was previously when we looked at that was, you know, there may be a certain technological difficulty with some of the consumers that may visit downtown that may not appreciate convenience or the use of Pango or maybe even have a smartphone. So that was one of the drawbacks. It seems like an easy, effective solution, but that is one of the drawbacks.
Okay.
But there are also places where they have a, what is it, a meter machine where you insert your credit card, you get, you know, you pay for, you know, how many hours or minutes you want to spend. You stay there, you get your receipt, and you place it on your dashboard. And that takes care of the, you know, Pango or the old fashioned meter, but at least you capture your, you know, the, your revenue or the money at that time, and people don't have to come back, you know, and worry about all the other details. I think that's a possibility, you know? I do, I am interested in us resolving this. I walked up and down that street. I talked to some people who said, yeah, they won't name who, but some of, you know, the business owners also park there. And so, you know, and they move their vehicles back and forth. That's not helping us, you know? Yet they come here and they complain about no parking for their customers. So yes, I do, I would support us enforcing some kind of, you know, parking.
Has the city looked at purchasing any, I mean, there's a couple properties that have private, I mean, I guess La Crosse class is the only one I could think of right now, but like they have a few parking spaces. Like, is there any, or like Centennial Hall, like annexing some of their parking somehow?
This is going to be, this is where I wade into this. Frequently, my opinion is asked, is this a parking quantity issue? I don't believe so. I believe it's a, it's a issue of management. We have 13 municipal lots, close to 1,000 parking spaces. What we have now is a system that is, if you will, out of whack. Because we're not enforcing, there are people who are parking on the streets for well beyond three hours. And customers then come in, they complain. And then, of course, the business owner complains to me, they're never, of course, speaking about themselves or their staff, someone else. And it's a circular, when the system has one piece that isn't working properly, it throws it off. I don't believe that it's an issue of parking spaces. I think it's a parking management issue, though.
So when you first started your conversation, you mentioned new systems, like other than chalking and that sort of thing. Like, are there systems where you can like scan somebody's license plate and then when you go around the corner again, you?
Those do exist.
So would that be the type of thing the city, like, I mean, you said, I know there's a cost, but was that something that was being discussed?
We've never looked at that other than a very top-level glance at it. We've never went into weeds because without the commission buy-in, we're not going to go down that path.
Right. I'd be uncomfortable with parking meters because I think that would be a super steep learning curve for everybody. I mean, we feel like we have a hard enough time getting people come downtown, and I also don't think that's going to be something that goes over.
Parking management is really about changing behavior first and foremost. Yes, there can be a revenue from it, but changing the behavior, I believe, is much more important.
Well, so that's where I was thinking on the enforcement that might change behavior? Or are you suggesting there's other ways to change behavior?
I would, I would start with enforcement first.
Right, right. So not, I was thinking of it not as revenue, like scanning, but as enforcement.
But if you're just simply scanning and not, you know, recovering some, enforcing some ordinance or, you know, resolution or law that we have passed that said you cannot park here beyond 33 hours. If you park here after this length of time, this is the fine. Then what's the purpose of the enforcement? What's the purpose of the scanning? I don't want, you know, I'm supportive of, you know, processes that help us manage parking. People are complaining, but in order to do the scanning, it seems to me that we may have to designate somebody who will go back, do the scanning, go back again, you know, do the scanning to make sure the same person is not parked there for six hours. That means money to support this person. It means resources. How then do we capture the money that will fund that particular position? It should come from the parking. So if we're going to do anything that has to do with enforcing parking in this city, we need to make sure that, you know, the resources, whatever we capture from it, helps to sustain that particular position. That's where I'm going with this, you know? Because I think it seems to me that right now, people don't, you know, they park there for three hours, they move their cars and park somewhere else. We're not enforcing the code. They don't see anything wrong with that, so they continue to do it. But the city also, you know, is looking at ways of resolving the problem. I do think that there are places where meters, meters, there are meters at CMU, there are meters in Lansing, there are meters in other areas, you know? So yes, let's learn how to use the meters. And there are all kinds of meters that we can explore.
I would have to agree that if, parking has always been an issue downtown, and it really isn't because there's not enough spaces. It is because there's not enough single parking in front of businesses, right? So if we could have five lanes of parking in front of the storefronts, we would probably be fine. But we can't do that because then we'd have to move everything back and just take up way too much space. But what, and then the whole downtown would be a parking lot and people would complain about that. But what I would like to do is definitely look at some revenue capture, because the way to change behavior is not just to state, this is, you know, this is what we want you to do. There has to be a consequence when it's not done. Otherwise, it's like, it's like raising a child. If you tell them, don't do that, don't do that, don't do that, don't do that, but you never follow through with a punishment or a consequence, then they continue to do it. So we, I think that we should look at ways to capture revenue, and I believe that we should look at ways, different ways that we can do that. I buy permits for the parking next to the building that I work in. I don't always park there, but during COVID, I didn't have to because there was nobody in my parking lot. But I do, I do support the city in that way. And people complain about the price of the permits, but they've never had to buy a permit on CMU campus, which is extremely expensive. So $75 a year, I believe, is what it is for a daily parking, is not a big ask. I think that either we look at, we can look at meters, we can look at Pango, we can look at utilizing like iPads, I know that they've done that before, or the little, they look like, like smartphones, but really all they do is just log the information, time and date, and take a picture of the driver's license, and then you're able to process through that and see who's been there the longest and issue a ticket. So it's also linked to a database that will tell you who owns the car, and then it just, the ticket is just automatically mailed out to the person. I would like to look at that. I would like to look at areas around us that, that look at, that do parking, like Midland, Bay City, Lansing, you know, areas like that, to see what, what they do with their parking. What does Claire do? You know, do they enforce parking in the downtown area? Or do they have meters? You know, how do they handle that stuff? But I would really like to seriously look at how to handle the problem with parking in the downtown area. And maybe we need to also encourage people, we encourage people all the time to park a little further out in the parking lot so you get your steps in, right? So that you, you know, you're walking into Meyer, you park out so that you get your steps in to come into Meyer so that you're physically fit. Maybe push that, you know, having that extra steps is important as well. And handicapped parking is always important. See, and I'm not into metering or tagging anyone that sits in a handicap parking spot as long as they are designated to be there with a sticker of their own or with a license plate. But I do want other areas to, other parking spaces to be rotated.
Commissioner Asman had his hand up at some point.
Go ahead, Mary. I can, after you.
Well, I have two thoughts. You know, if we explored different methods of capturing some revenue, it seems like it would be best to settle on one and not have multiple systems to settle on one. And then the other thought was, when I look at this map in our packet of downtown Mount Pleasant parking areas, there are some that are blocks away, and you could encourage that walking by not having your metering mechanism farther away, just have it in the up close spots.
Commissioner Asman?
I was just curious why the enforcement stopped. Was it the chalking was deemed illegal? And we have no other way of judging time for the, or was it the pandemic or both?
It was, it was a combination of things. It started with chalking.
Yeah.
And then from there, we did a survey of downtown business owners and staff, asked them, how would you like us to handle this? Would you like us to do nothing? Would you like us to look at physical meters? Or would you like us to look at some sort of, I'm going to call it electronic version like the Pango? 85% said do nothing. So that's where things stopped.
And we did not.
And then the pandemic came after that.
Well, it doesn't help their businesses because they're complaining that their customers don't have parking spaces. It also does not help the city. We do need revenue to maintain, you know, the street to handle any parking, you know, ordinances or enforcement. And, you know, I do think that we have to think of ways to support projects that we undertake and at the same time, be supportive of business. We're trying to be supportive of business, but we also have to be realistic that we just simply can't not do anything. And year in, year out, they come here and they complain, and it's the same thing again and again and again.
Yes.
So I hear a couple of things as we went through this discussion so far. One is enforcement, and the other has to do with parking management. So one of the things that we talked about staff-wise was perhaps if the interest of the commission is to look at enforcement, the need for enforcement, that maybe we start there. And I would defer to our public safety director because that would be his bailiwick, so to speak, of the enforcement side. But, you know, we can have discussions around that. If we aren't satisfied with that changing behavior, et cetera, then what we might want to do is consider a parking management study, which typically is done by professionals in that field, so that we can get a handle on not only the quantity and the location, et cetera, of our parking, but how best to manage what we have to get the outcome we want. So those are two thoughts that we've talked about internally, based on, you know, what the direction is and the wishes of the commission. So just food for thought.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Commissioner Simon, what's your thoughts on this?
Yeah, I mean, I think I see the value in readjusting our enforcement and management strategy. I think if we were to do any sort of meter, it might be best to do it like on the streets to incentivize that, you know, people who are probably employees are being downtown longer to park in the lots, and then anyone who is on the street is probably someone who's staying or like going into shops. And then we still get that revenue stream. And then they'll said something about that behavior study. If we decide to move forward on either enforcement, whether it's the time blocks or the meter, would it be useful to set a time, say in like a year, we look and see whether we are satisfied with the behavior changes and whether we'd like to revisit or move forward or something else?
Probably. When we're looking at behavior changes, though, sometimes a year is not enough.
Yeah, that's, I, just as an example, but...
So sometimes we have to do a two-year follow-up to see how things are going.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ake?
I do agree with, I would support the enforcement because that is much more immediate. It's something we can do right away. You know, we hopefully have the resources, if Director Loria says we do, since it's in his area. So it is something we can hopefully work on in terms of immediacy. It will address our concern right now. And as you have indicated, give us the time, you know, small business, two to three years to establish itself. So two years, we go back, we look at it. If we're not satisfied with that, then we go, you know, we do the metered parking or other forms of, you know, parking implementation. Because we do need the data beyond just simply hearsay, hearsay, or what people are telling us. Let's see what's happening, you know? And we collect based on what code enforcement people are telling us that is happening, and then we go back and review.
Commissioner Allsager?
I guess I'd want to hear from Director Loria. Is that a good use of your personnel? I guess I'd want to hear from Director Loria. Is that a good use of your personnel?
Well, you know, it's all kind of like, what we mean is, I would use a police officer per se to do that. I think that that's not the right use of a police officer's time. I would, or even for the code enforcement officer doing it, or looking, outsourcing. But the first, the first thing, at least in my mind, has to be decided is what mechanism we are going to use to regulate parking. And I, you know, I'll say this publicly, I don't know where chalking tires is going to go, but we've seen it get banned, then we've seen it overturned and banned, and it's just not efficient. The license plate readers, you got to be careful. They're useful, effective. Some people would call them intrusive and strict. But if you guys want to use license plate readers, okay, you can do that. Pango is already in place at where at CMU. They're very familiar with it. Stretching that or including that downtown, I don't think to be that big of a issue to do, other than the notification to the public, if they get the public to understand what we are now doing. But CMU is very happy with Pango, very happy. And again, you're talking a license plate reader system, you got to have a vehicle, you got to have equipment, you're talking, talking some expenditure there. Pango, they already have the system in place. Do we contract? Do we do it ourselves? You know, that's all up for debate.
Commissioner Ake?
I know, I know that CMU, there are parking lots at CMU, okay. So there are parking lots at CMU that don't have Pango, okay? The one in Answad doesn't. You have to have a parking permit to park there. But you also, if you don't have a parking permit, you buy day passes, okay? I spent some time in Lansing at the Capitol. There are also stations where, as I said, you can go get your ticket or receipt and place it there. That way, you don't have law enforcement officers doing that. And I was not suggesting that. But the city of Lansing also has people who drive by. I don't know whether they are affiliated with the people who run the machines to make sure that they, you know, they read the receipts. And if your timestamp has expired, they will issue you a ticket. So if you're lucky to be one of those ones who's been there and they don't notice you, good for you. But if you're not lucky, well, you get a ticket. But I don't know. I have a question here about the mechanism. So we've got all these options. Is it possible to explore them, talk to CMU to see, you know, as you said, they're happy with Pango. But what about the parking lots that don't have Pango, where they actually go in and they issue tickets? And my students complain about that. And my colleagues complain about that. So what is it that they're using to do that, right? So I don't know. So maybe we should investigate those and see how we can adopt them, or...
I'm going to call that a station that you're describing a kiosk, for the sake of argument.
Okay, okay.
Somebody who go up to it, they have a smartphone to use it. Typically, the kiosk, they put in a, the parking spots are numbered or labeled somehow.
Yes.
And so if you were to pull up in the parking lot, if you're parking spot 1A, you go up to the kiosk, you know, the first thing it's going to ask you, what parking spot are you in? And you put in 1A. And then, of course, then you charge. Otherwise, you know, if you put in 2A, you may be paying for somebody else's parking.
Yes, yes, yes.
Or parking not in the right spot. So I know that aesthetics, I don't, I don't know how you guys feel, or, but if you're going to label a parking spot, there has to be, there has to be a post, because we have winter. So you, I mean, there's a number of things to consider with that, too. So it's tricky. It's tricky.
Parking management is never simple.
Well, can we just simply, I don't want to give up, you know? I would like us to explore something or somethings, so that we can figure out which one might work best for the city. Maybe we'll mount posts, you know, that will say 1A, or have signs numbering on the curb, you know, to indicate that. I don't know. I mean, you know, and then align them. I don't know. But we've got to explore something, you know, and so that we don't come back to this issue next year and the year after and the year after, you know. So that's all I'm saying right now. I just really do not want to give up.
Bill? I had mentioned a work study about this, or to bring information, right? You were going to do that? Or no?
He suggested...
No, he said, yeah.
Suggested in the future.
Okay.
It's okay.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Just a comment that it sounds like we're in agreement that we would approve of something to help the revenue for the city.
Was it chalk? Does that mean you mark a person when they park a certain tire? Do you sign their card or do you chalk their tires? How's that work?
That's how that used to work, yeah.
Yeah, they used to, they had a little stick with chalk on it, and they'd mark the tire.
Or, personally, do you use white vinegar?
Yep. If they carried white vinegar around with them, I suppose they could. I think that, it sounds like we have a consensus that we would like the staff to move forward to find some possible ways of managing parking, whether, preferably with a revenue source. I can tell you that down in Chicago, when you go down there and park in one of their lots, you have to, you don't have to remember what lot you're, what number space you're parked in, but you have to know your license plate. So if you're in a lot, you're parked in there, you pull in, you go to the kiosk, you realize you don't know your license plate, you run back to your car, right? And you get your license plate, you come back to the kiosk, you fill it out, and then you put the tag in your car window. But I mean, those are ways of doing it that are, you know, nobody has, there's, nobody has to man it, just somebody has to come by every once in a while to make sure it's still running kind of thing. I don't know if we want to go to that extent, but in Chicago, it works really well for them. Yeah.
How do they almost run a credit check before you need to park your car?
Yes, well, yes. Yes, it's like sixty, sixty, eighty dollars a day to park in a spot that the E train runs across. Yeah. So it sounds like we have a consensus on this. We'd like you guys to move forward.
Do you need a motion or?
No, not on a, not on a work session. But I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
All those in favor say yes. All those opposed, no. We are adjourned at seven fifty-six.
Thank you.